Okay, good evening, everyone. This meeting is being recorded. I'm calling to order. The meeting of the full regional school district planning board at 5:30 PM. So roll call attendance. Chuck?
Here.
Carl?
Yes.
I'm here from Alford. Jim?
You're here.
George?
Here.
Tom Berkle? Deb Phillips?
Here.
Steve Bannon?
Here.
And Peter Taylor's gonna be late. Don Coburn?
I'm here.
John Silbert?
Here.
Um, Kim?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Tara?
Here.
Nancy? Uh, Nadine?
Here.
Colin? No, come on. Bonnie? Patrick? Patrick's here, connecting to audio. Uh, Michael? Bill?
Here.
Uh, West Stockbridge. Andy?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
And is Marie here?
She's probably not going to be. I think she's, she, I know she's on vacation.
Okay. And we've got, um, Beth and Peter. We have both superintendents. Great. We've got Jake. Uh, who else do we have? Frank? We have our council, Russell. And we have Matt. Did I miss anyone? Okay, well, welcome everyone.
Patrick White here.
Yeah, it's, uh, Patrick, you are here. But thanks for affirming that. Uh, in terms of our attendees, is there anyone there who needs to be with us now? Okay. So welcome attendees. We've got, um, looks like seven, no, six, not, um, no, five, not counting press. Um, so welcome. All right. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of March 29th. I'll take a motion to approve. So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay, who was the second? I'm sorry.
I was Carl.
Carl, thank you. Okay. Um, any corrections or discussion of the minutes?
Can, can I ask a question on page three, the first paragraph? Third line from the bottom, it says Sharon and Beth? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me, should we put in the full names?
Well, well, I, I, I just, Sharon, I, I assumed it was Sharon Gregory?
No.
Sharon who?
It's Sharon, um,
Harrison.
Harrison, yes.
Oh, okay.
She's the business manager at, um,
Oh, okay. That's why I didn't know who.
Yes. Well, you're right. Let's put in the full names there.
Okay, thank you.
Um,
All I really saw.
Okay.
I just briefly.
Thank you. All right, uh, hearing no other comments, seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote on approving the minutes. Chuck?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim? Jim?
Yes.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kim?
Abstain.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Uh, Nadine?
Yes.
Has Bonnie arrived? Oh, I see Tom's arrived. Has Bonnie arrived? Now. Uh, Tom? Would you like to vote on these minutes?
Um, yeah, they're fine.
Okay, great. Um, now I've lost my place. Uh, did I do Namalbro, Susan?
Yes, you did.
Okay. I did, I did Sheffield. Uh, okay, Stockbridge. Patrick?
Yes.
Has Michael joined?
He's on his way.
Okay. Um, Bill?
Abstain.
Hi, Andy?
Hi.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. Did I miss anyone? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, I'm keeping with our practice. I'm gonna take public comments at the start of the meeting as well as at the end of the meeting. So attendees who have public comments, please raise your hand and we'll, we'll take your comments. Okay, Joan Rogers, uh, can you bring her over, Amanda?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Joan.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to relay something that happened quickly. Um, you know, I was at the bank talking to a teller. She asked me what I was doing and I said, oh, I have to go home and read some information on the regional school district merger and she sighed.
What's up? Yeah, need a drink, that's for sure.
Hey, Michael, you need to mute yourself.
I apologize. Sorry.
I think we could all use that. Okay, Joan, sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. This gal has kids in the Southern Berkshire school and, um, she said, you know, I don't know anything about the merger. I'm worried about the cost. I, I don't know what's gonna happen to our kids and, um, you know, I, I just sort of gave her a quick pitch and said something about CBT and she said, I, you know, I don't think my son is qualified for, you know, is college track. So she, you know, she was really interested in all this. I turn around, I'm leaving and it was quiet in there. Two other tellers turned to her and say, well, that was really interesting. I didn't know that. So I'm just giving you that observation as a pitch or wondering if the, the community outreach could do like little pop-up things on the sidewalks or at, you know, farmer's market. I mean, just to get people as they're going by, to just ask them, what do they know? And, you know, just to engage rather than, um, I think there are some people who, who don't, you know, read the blog, sign up for things, et cetera, et cetera. So just my pitch for some, I don't know, just easy community involvement. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Joan. And, you know, we've got 24 people on the board and we've got another four or five who attend most of these meetings. And if each of us, you know, every week, just had the kinds of conversations you just described at the banks and at the grocery stores and wherever we go, that's, that's pretty good outreach, right? And so I do encourage everyone to have those conversations regularly. Uh, and community outreach has been thinking about lots of different ways to get information out more broadly. Um, but thank you, thank you for that suggestion. Sharon Gregory?
Should be coming over.
Okay.
Here we go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, Sharon. Hi.
Yes, Sharon Gregory, Greg Gankin. Um, I want to second what Joan had to say. I just came back from picking up my gin and tonic makings and at the liquor store, you know, there are these people who know I always update them, but I hadn't been there for a long time. And I gave them, you know, the, it wasn't a 30-second, you know, it was more like a 15-minute, 10 or 15-minute rundown, but um, most people really, really don't know. And I'm not saying a few people, a lot of people, most of the people. I started talking to, um, school board members of BHRSD and, uh, and they don't know and I'm, um, asking them to get together with other friends who don't know and, you know, discuss what's going on so that it doesn't hit them between the eyes in, you know, September, October, whenever. And I, I can only encourage all, um, in, um, making some more of those, uh, one or two pagers, uh, that are so effective. Um, Lucy gave me, uh, some earlier and I told her I was gonna, uh, hand them out and I've been walking door to door. I don't have that many, but, you know, using that as a way to, uh, start the discussion. Um, and basically, you know, you could just guarantee that everybody who you start the conversation would say, I don't know anything. So, you know, it's a way to open the door and start the conversation, but, um, you know, if we could get little neighbors, groups of five or eight, um, to discuss some of these things, uh, you know, it's bubbling up. Um, you know, one of the things that, um, I asked about was this leveling. Um, and everybody I talked to says I'm against that. And if that's what some of the people think, um, then that might be a showstopper for, um, you know, people who think that they have to, when they come to uh, Monument, that's what they're gonna get. So hopefully, you know, there'll be some more discussion before the vote so that, um, we don't depend on less than a year for the new school committee to sort everything out and figure out a curriculum. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, we do have, and I see Peter's hand is up and I'm not surprised and I'm gonna let you respond, Peter, but um, we do have a request for quotes posted for, um, some support for community education campaign uh, that will be launched after this board takes its vote on whether or not to recommend merger. So I think once that vote happens, uh, if it, if there is a recommendation to, uh, merge, then we can really focus on the community education piece. Not that we haven't been focused on that for the last three years, but we don't yet have a recommendation out of this, uh, board. And so, um, you know, our focus really needs to be on making that decision right now. Uh, and a lot of time and effort has been, has gone into the assessment methodologies that's gonna be our presentation tonight uh, over the last couple of months because before we can really go out uh, and educate the community fully on what this is going to mean, we have to decide what it's gonna mean. We have to have something that we're recommending. We have to have assessment methodologies that have been approved by this board, if they do get approved. So, um, little more patience. I hope we will get there. Um, and we continue to do a lot of community outreach, but I think the real push is going to be after the recommendation is made. Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna be defensive and go point by point, but I think there are some, um, important misunderstandings in, in our work as a, a regional school district planning board, but also how different programs and, and projects are perceived, uh, uh, in, for that matter, in every, in every one of the schools. Uh, and, and I think it may make sense to take some of the, the common misunderstandings and write a little FAQ or, and, and clarify people's understandings of things, uh, and refute it. So the, the thing about the mixed ability grouping at Monument, like that in fact is true. We are doing that and, and we're seeing really strong indicators that it's, it's working. Um, and then at the same time, there's all this other stuff going on, like three kids got into Cornell and two to Dartmouth and, and one to is, is apparently deciding between Dartmouth, Stanford, Yale, and, and some other equally wonderful one. Like, so, um, all, all this, um, all, all this interesting things are happening and, and I think there's a, unless somebody's really watching the press, attending meetings and, and really deep in it, um, they, they don't have context for it. And even some people who who are doing all those things also don't have context for it. So I'd make a case that, that we need to, to, uh, pick some common misunderstandings and, and really clarify them.
Now Lucy, say one thing more?
Yep.
Um, um, you know, my neighborhood says many people are going to Lennox because they can get, um, you know, the academic, um, program they want. Um, and, um, others who I wanted to listen in to, you know, some of our sessions, I, I asked because there, you know, all the middle school kids are, are, were around and, you know, without a doubt, they all said, we'll have to see. So, you know, it's, um, so besides the CBT, which I love the write-up and so forth, if we could tackle whatever we can say about the academic program, you know, this sort of like the, the rest of people who don't, you know, are, go to the CBT program, that would be very helpful.
Okay. Yeah, we're working on, we're actually working on updating our most frequently asked, frequently asked questions and responses. Jake and I are working on that as we speak. And so, uh, that is something that I think would be very worthwhile and would respond to many of the misconceptions that are currently out there and are being reported in the press, unfortunately.
But, but, and Lucy, the only other thing I'd add is, is a bunch of this, and this is a legal term, it is, is hearsay or anecdotal reports, right? So are many people going to Lennox? The, the data I have doesn't show that, right? And I can pull it out and we see how many people have choiced into Lennox and, and then, and then alternately, we could see how many people from Lennox have choiced into Berkshire Hills or, or southern, southern Berkshire. So there's a lot of sort of overgeneralizations that, that I think actually uh, are not accurate and it does this whole process a big disservice when, when we take cocktail party conversation and, and accept it as, as fact potentially.
Yeah, I'm gonna take one more public comment and then we're gonna move forward and there'll be public comments at the end of the meeting as well. But Julie has her hand up, so. Amanda, can you?
Yep, go ahead, Julie. She's just muted. There we go. Lucy, I was blacked out. Where, did you call on me by chance?
I did.
Thank you. Um, you know, at the beginning of this meeting, I really didn't have a comment to make at that point, but just listening to the conversation with Peter and Sharon, I just wanna say how this conversation reminds me um, that we need to remember there are best practices and in school, two school districts. And the conversation that we just listened to really just sounded a lot like Southern Berkshire being absorbed into Berkshire Hills. Um, and I really didn't appreciate that. So that's really all I wanted to say. And I know that there are concerns about the different approaches, um, but a lot of that really does, there needs to be policy statements around some of these kinds of things. And I know we're going to say it's needs to go to transition committee and different things like that. Um, but I do think it's important that we remember we're looking at the best of two school districts here.
Okay. Um, thank you, Julie. Let's move to item four on our agenda, continued discussion of the eight town regional school district agreement. So, um, the first two items on the agenda, costs associated with leased school buildings. This whole section four is a continuation of a discussion we had at our last meeting, as is intra-district choice. So let's begin with section four. Um, and you may remember that this is the language for A through E is the language I've put up on the screen at our last meeting. And then F five um, is new too. It was part of the language I put up on the screen at the last meeting and I just moved the order because it made more sense to put this after the school closure section than before. So I hope everyone has had a chance to review that language again, think about it some more. Um, John, you weren't at our last meeting and I know this section was a section, you and Bill actually were not at our last meeting and I know this, the, the section was of particular interest to both of you. So I wanna give you first, first an opportunity to weigh in on this and then I'll take additional discussion and then maybe we can move forward to a vote.
I, I read the minutes and, um, all of our minutes are so great. I gotta tell you, I felt like I was at the meeting. It was shorter than being at the meeting, but I really got a good sense of it. And so I appreciate that and, um, I really think, uh, we're going in the right direction. Um, whatever my reservations were, I think you guys have pretty much taken care of them. So it looks good to me. And besides, I always, I always do what Nadine says, even if I disagree with her. So I think we're good on that.
All right. Well, thank you. And, and thank you to Amanda for getting these minutes done so well. Uh, Bill?
Uh, I, I agree. I, um, I admit that, uh, although I, I did miss the last meeting and I just got back from a long trip. I've been catching up, uh, for the last couple of days. Uh, if the focus is on, um, section four F five, um, which I think is what you were referring to, Lucy, uh, on page nine, at least on my copy, um, that language looks fine to me.
Okay. The other section that sort of incorporated, Bill, what you had suggested at the meeting, two meetings ago, is, um, for D, which lays out these different possible scenarios when the district is considering uh, making significant school improvements. So there's a possibility that the district can condition a decision to incur any capital costs on getting title to the premises, which is something that you had suggested.
Right.
If the member town says no, I don't wanna convey title, then the member town can elect to fund those school improvements.
Right.
Which is essentially what happened with the improvements to the Egremont School. And then if neither of those things are gonna happen, um, there's gonna be no conveyance of title because the member town doesn't wanna do that and the member town doesn't wanna pick up the cost, then the district would have the option of terminating the lease, but it would have to follow the school closure protocol.
Yeah.
Provided in section sub-paragraph S.
It, it seems like a reasonable approach. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm okay with that.
Okay, great. So this has been vetted by Russell, who said it looked okay to him. Um, so if there's no further discussion on this, I think we're ready for a vote. Okay.
So move.
Is that George?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Deb, okay. Uh, seeing no further discussion, I'll, uh, take roll call vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Uh, abstain.
George?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Well, good morning.
Deb?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Uh, Nadine?
Yes.
Has Bonnie joined?
Yeah.
Oh, hi Bonnie. Are you a yes? Um, Patrick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Did I miss anyone? Okay, great. Okay, next item is the intra-district choice, that's section three C. Um, and we had asked Jake to, um, work on the language he presented at the last meeting to incorporate, um, some of the suggestions the board members made at our last meeting. So that's on page, uh, five and six of the draft. Jake, do you wanna just talk through the revisions you made?
Yeah, sure. Uh, and thanks, uh, to a couple of members who sent me some feedback and to Lucy and Russell for helping to wordsmith this. So, um, I think the first thing I heard from folks is that he wanted to make sure that intra-district choice students had, um, um, priority over inter-district choice students. So intra-district would be students moving, working within the eight towns and inter-district would be students coming from outside the eight towns. So that's now written in. Um, we will determine how many seats are available and then offer those up to students in the district first. Second part was, um, we heard from folks that they wanted to uh, ensure that if siblings were in the school, that there would be a priority given to a student who's applying into a school where the sibling was also attending, pretty consistent with choice policies. And so we also put that in. That's under three. Um, there was also some questions or comments around the ability to offer transportation if it was reasonable and, um, accessible and available, not required, not a guarantee, but offered if possible. And so uh, we did put that into the last part of, um, number three, which basically allows, um, you know, depending on capacity and the reasonability of access to busing, it would allow for intra-district choices to access uh, the bus system. And then I think the only other change, which, um, was a really good catch, um, and I appreciate the folks who raised this was um, the point that the two middle schools are not currently the same grade span. And so under one on transition, just be crystal clear, any student who, who's in a current school can remain in that school, whether it's an elementary or middle school. Um, however, we extended it to say that if a student were in an elementary school, they could continue in the associated middle school, um, through the intra-district choice policy. So if they were in, for example, Undermountain, um, and, uh, they wanted to continue to Mount Everett Middle School, then, uh, they would be allowed to do that. So, um, I think if anything, we've been incredibly liberal on, uh, what we're writing into this in terms of allowing students to stay put and have a reasonable amount of intra-district choice options.
So the one new concept in here, which I have bolded with a T, TBD, is what stay put means, right?
Yeah.
Stay put as of what date, right? So, so, um, we put in there if they are in the school at the end of this 2023, 2024 school year, that falls into the stay put category as opposed to 2025 or whenever, um, it would be June of 2025 would be the other possibility, right, Jake?
Right, correct.
Because if, if we write currently, which is what the language said in the last draft, that doesn't work, obviously, because that doesn't cover people who have their kids in a particular school, the next school year. So the question is, what's the cutoff uh, for that stay put option? After which, if you're doing choice, it would be under three intra district choice. So we thought it reasonable to put June 2024 is the cutoff because we will have the merger vote in September, October 2023, if there's a recommendation out of this board to recommend merger, it'll probably be the fall of this year. So people will know by then that it's likely there's going to be a merger of the two districts and can, you know, make their choices accordingly. Otherwise, if you make it June of 2025, there could be a lot of jockeying in those final months. But that's for this board to decide whether wh- what date you want to fix as the state put measuring date. Are people, well, let me put it this way. Does anyone object to June 2024 as the state put date? The date for measuring whether someone is in a particular school or not?
Deb has her hand up.
Who does?
Deb.
Oh, okay, Deb.
Yeah, I don't know that I object. I just want to sort of clarify. So wherever, so if the decision gets made to do this, this in this coming fall, you are where you are. You don't get to say, oh, the decision has been made. I will make a decision about where I want my child to land. So we're we're not we're saying to people, wherever you are, next year is where you stay, not knowing this is coming. You get to choose where you are.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to stay there because you could still fall within three. But you're not guaranteed transportation. Right? You're not guaranteed transportation if you make the decision later.
Right.
Under one, you're guaranteed transportation.
I just wanted to clarify that that the decision will be made at a time af- after which people would have already made choices for that's all. And I I said, I don't know that I have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that we're clear that that's what we're saying. It's not as if oh, this merger is gonna happen. This is where I'd like my child to land. I'll plan on that for next September.
Well, let me ask Peter and Beth this, because I don't know the answer. When people are choicing in, right? When when does that happen? Does that happen in June for the next year or does it happen later?
I I think typically it happens in like now, March or or April for the next year.
Okay, so June would be enough time. If typically it's happening in March or April, then by June, they will have made that choice decision.
I I I don't actually think that's great because people are making like guidance people and other folks are making schedules in schools. And if we wait till June, i- it it may really complicate that process. Beth, do you have thoughts on that?
Beth, are you? Did you hear Peter's question?
Sorry, I'm multitasking. I missed it.
That's okay.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Lucy, do you want to rephrase it?
Yeah. Can you restate, Peter?
Oh, I I think the question was, could we do like an inter district choice as late as as June? And my feeling was waiting till June could really complicate class assignments and teaching loads.
Yeah, I I I definitely think that that's too late.
Right.
I I definitely think you'd want to play because we have a requirement while currently by contract to to notice teachers what their, you know, we'd have to do all that planning prior to June.
Well, the language is students enrolled in a district as of June. So they would have to be enrolled, not just making a choice election, but actually enrolled. When does that? When does that happen? When someone's making a choice?
What we have, what's the state requirement, Peter? We have to tell them in January. Well, how many we're gonna accept? Is it January or February?
Well, there's that. This might, Lucy, this might not be, this might be a good one to to not try to finalize right now, but to do some more research on it.
Okay, so we'll leave this date open. Right? We'll just leave that open for now. But the rest of the language, let's get a vote on that. Okay. So Susan's gonna hand up.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Jake, for pulling this language together after our last meeting. I'm just looking for some clarification under three where it says other inter district choice, subject to seat availability to be determined annually. Students who reside in the district may elect to attend to the residence. So I I am reading that that if I'm in Great Barrington and I choosing to Undermountain in second grade, what once I'm accepted there for second grade, that I'm still, I can continue through and Undermountain. I don't have to reapply each year.
That's correct.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure.
And not only that, we went a step further on this particular policy. And that student would be eligible, actually stay through in the middle school under mountain and then Mount Everett.
Okay, so.
Yeah, there's no reapplication. Once a student is enrolled in a school, that's it.
Okay, perfect. And that's great that they can continue in. Wonderful.
Okay. Any other hands? No. All right, so I'll take a motion on this.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so this motion is to adopt the language in section three, respecting intra district choice with the exception of the the date for the state put option in paragraph one, which will keep open. So seeing no further discussion, I'm gonna call for a vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kim? Kim? Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Bonnie? Bonnie, you still with us? Yeah, you're still here, Bonnie. Okay, I'll come back to her. Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Bonnie? No Bonnie and Kim? Is Kim still on, Amanda?
So.
I'm a yes.
Oh, thank you, Bonnie.
I don't see Kim on my list.
Not listed.
No, I think she left.
Okay. All right. Well, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. So we're now to the main event, which is the methodologies for apportionment of operating and capital cost to the eight towns. The finance subcommittee recommendation, Jake and Nadine have prepared a presentation on this. And what I'm going to do, it it's going to take about an hour to get through the presentation. So what I'm gonna ask is that people hold questions until the end of the presentation. All of the slides are numbered. So when you have a question about a slide, write the number down and your question, and then we're gonna go to all the questions at the end of the presentation. The idea is that we're not probably gonna get to any deliberations tonight. We're gonna get the presentation. We're gonna get the questions on the table. We're gonna get as many questions answered tonight as we can. Any things that require clarification or additional information? And then our next meeting is going to be devoted to deliberation on these proposed assessment methodologies. So Jake, the floor is yours.
Thanks. All right, let me just get my screen dialed up here. All right, we're all, we can all see the screen?
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you. So thanks for the intro, Lucy, and I just want to begin by thinking we're presenting, I had the honor of presenting a lot of information tonight, but the information that is being presented is really the collective effort of a lot of people. It's folks from the finance subcommittee who put a lot of time in. Matt Abrahams is on the line, has put an incredible amount of time in, our research team, folks from the Department of Education, Mark Abraham. So I just want to be clear that a lot of effort has gone into this today and just thanks everyone for what they've what they've offered. We're gonna start with just really quick context. I'm not gonna get too much into the weeds here, but I wanted folks just to be reminded that our core question from the very beginning, I remember delivering a presentation about a year ago, a final set of recommendations to you all that evaluated the various models and the core question, which we've been really sharing and simplifying for folks is can our districts do better together? And that's the question we continue to explore and investigate and debate. So again, the question is posed here. I always like to remind folks of the geography of our region. I know you all know it probably better than I do, but it's it's nice just to remind folks how the eight towns really nest nicely together in Southern Berkshire. The challenges, and these are slides you've all seen before, are the challenges that have existed and continue to exist, declining enrollment, rising costs and operations, really flat state revenue, which is transferring the fiscal burden from state partnership to local taxpayers. And all that impacts on our ability to offer a comprehensive, diverse range of programs and services. Really ultimately kind of this notion of educational quality. This really big graph, and I did send the slides to you all. I hope that you were able to open one of the two links. Kind of a big file, and I'm hoping that one of those worked. But what I really wanted to call out, this was preliminary numbers from the Department of Education this year on state aid. And I think what is I just really want to point out is I blocked the districts from by South County and everything central and north. And you can see that the change in aid to our South County communities was actually slightly less than 1%, $30 per student. And it's just important that folks understand that this pattern of receiving minimum aid from the state is has been really the case and may likely be the case looking forward. So that just means additional fiscal burden operates the schools at the local level. We always keep our eyes open and optimistic about new funding streams and states' attention to rural issues and rural aid. And we'll keep advocating for that. But this is the reality, I think, of what all the Southern Berkshire districts, including the one I lead right now, is are facing. This is just a graph that you've seen. You saw Ken Rock present this probably well over a year ago. Updated data, but this gives you a sense of the blue line at the very top is in effect the spending at the district level. So that's what you're budgeting. And the orange bar, which is really one, there's only two things you need to focus on, the top line, which is spending, and the orange bars, which are state aid. You can see state aid is green relatively flat across the board. And so what's happening is this gap is widening between what we're spending and how much the state ponies up. Again, not to repeat myself at the third time, but this transfers additional liability from the state partnership with the state to the to the local towns. I put some hyperlinks in here just to let you know throughout the presentation. If you want to go a little deeper, there's some hyperlinks, and so you'll see that throughout. It's important just to remind everyone that all the finance work that we're talking about is really the foundation of it is wanting to provide the best and highest quality education to the eight towns and the students who live in the eight towns and the families who live in the eight towns. And I know the ed ed subcommittee, ed quality subcommittee is working right now on curating a list of educational enhancements, the value proposition around education. And these were just a few things that we called out in terms of academic choices, expanded co-curriculars, specialized supports for students, obviously, the CBTE programs, which you've been talking about quite a bit, early childhood and and expanded more diverse student body. And these are all things that have come up through a variety of mechanisms that we've been engaged in around the ed quality work. And you'll hear more about that when the ed quality reports, you know, in the coming meetings. This slide is actually a slide I used a year ago with you all, and I was reviewing a lot of materials and preparing for tonight. And I realized this slide actually still holds. And it was my my final thought when I presented the models that last year, and that was that change is hard, both socially and emotionally. All the models, including the fiscal models we're showing you today, it has, there's, there's gains and there's losses, there's benefits and there's risks. And all these vary by town and state whole group. There's a variety of audience who have common priorities, but also at times competing priorities. And then all of this work is really extensive negotiation. I think we saw a lot of that within the finance subcommittee. So as I say, it's hard work. It's remarkable work and it's generational work. So I'm gonna pass it over to Nadine for a minute, just to set the stage on on the work that's occurred at the finance subcommittee, then we'll jump into the model.
Thank you, Jake. Before I say too much about that, I really just want to express my sincere gratitude to the members of our committee, Marie Ryan, Tom Burple, Mark Michael Canalis and Chuck Ketchin. I also want to express my gratitude to the alternates who attended and participated as if they were regular members. Colin Smith, excuse me, Colin Smith, Patrick White, John Colburn and Kim Alcatan, Alcatara, can I, I'm sorry, Kim A. As well as committee members such as Bonnie Silvers and Bill Voight, who joined us. I also want to give my thanks to Julie Hanum, Joan Rogers and Sharon Gregory, who have participated and shared their thoughts, their concerns and ideas. To Matt Abrahams, Jake Eberwine, Lucy Prashner, Peter Taylor, Peter, Dylan and Beth, I who have all been part of this in-depth conversation, bringing us great questions to consider. And without each one of you, not one of this, we would not have gotten to this point. And I also want to express acknowledgement to Roger Kavanaugh, who started off as the chairman of this committee and whose calm nature showed me the way. Since June of 22, when I became chairman of this committee, the the process of bringing this version of assessment formulas has come as a result of more than 14 two-hour meetings that at first were monthly and then increased to twice a month in November, when we realized we needed meeting times that were closer together as the concepts were complicated and needed time to pull things apart and digest. And we didn't want 30, 30 days between it. The committee has been supported in this work by several hundred hours from our consultant Matt Abrahams, and that's a guess on my part. He never lost faith. Matt kept running new spreadsheets, bringing us more and more charts on the numbers to provide to our committee with answers. We asked a lot of questions and they helped us come to the consensus of what was reasonable. Alongside of Matt was Jake working together to clarify our questions and sort out all that was confusing and difficult to comprehend. There have been hours of deliberation, reviewing at least five different methodologies and the creating out of the box thinking that would allow for a smooth transition for all eight towns. The members advocated for their individual towns, and then they compromised on ideas and philosophical conversations about the value of improving education for all of the children of the eight South Berkshire towns. And then they compromised on ideas and philosophical conversations about the value of improving education for all of the children of the eight South Berkshire towns. That are part of this conversation. We explored methods of handling debt, current debt, future debt, in business, you just combine and move on. But in a merger such as this where there's a political climate that's going to be involved, we have to be considerate of all the taxpayers. And their sensitivity to paying what they view as somebody else's obligation. So again, we found compromise on how all this would work. This was achieved by healthy and respectful discussions. To find the savings that combining can bring while expanding educational opportunities. And more diversified experiences for the kids. This work was hard, yes, yes, it was hard, but I feel it was worth every single minute. What will be presented to you today is what we feel is the best solution for all eight towns. And for all of the children of the two districts as we hope to combine into one. This work takes bravery. One has to be brave. To venture into these conversations.
Thank you. Alright, off we go. Thanks Nadine, appreciate it. So the task of the subcommittee was to develop a model for portioning funds, and you'll see that language used when we translate all this to the. Regional agreement, operating costs, that should say operating, operational, sorry, and capital expenses. And all this will be written into the draft agreement, assuming that we have a deliberate debate and we come to agreement. Consideration, we wanted a model that would help to smooth the fiscal impact across the eight towns. And the models that we looked at remain committed to ensuring educational enhancements. To a merged district. The models we want to be sure attempted to avoid. Worked in the avoidance of significant swings to individual towns. Particularly rises to individual towns and you'll see some of those in just a bit. We want to make sure that folks understand that Matt did an incredible amount of work. Developing projections and assumptions, working with. Looking at historical data, projecting forward, working with. The two districts and then we wanted to make sure that folks understood that the models did seek to achieve parity. Teacher salary parity across the merged district. That would be an important core expectation of what we propose. There were some challenges in doing all this work and Nadine pointed to, to some of those. So one is that the two districts currently use different apportionment models. Both operating and capital expenses, and so we, we did look at both of the districts' models and we evaluated and modeled both of those. There's, as you all know, and I've reported. A level of student flow around resident students, choice students and tuition enrollments, it varies. At the two districts and that complicates matters. The two districts spend different amounts of money beyond what they're required to spend. And some of that is attributed salaries, for example, in Berkshire Hills where teachers. Have a higher, higher salary scale than they do in Southern Berkshire. Patterns around grant spending and especially education costs. And then we did our, we did, I think, solid analysis and. Estimations around what would cost to build a newly constructed high school based on. The work of Berkshire Hills and, you know, as I mentioned, in the memo I wrote. The work of the Mass School Building Authority. So these were just a few highlighted challenges. Okay, the idea here was to study this in depth, negotiate among the committee. Make compromises, which I saw committee members do, and ultimately balance the interest of individual towns. Against the collective eight-town merge district. And again, the idea here was really positive outcomes for our kids in our community. Process Nadine has hit, I think we may be at 15 meetings now. So 15 finance subcommittees, the research team met weekly in some cases, five or six times a week. We have hundreds of simulations. With varying assumptions and parameters, we have, Matt has incredible number of. Spreadsheets that have sliced and diced a thing a lot of different ways, we consulted with. The local finance experts and with the state finance experts. We've had a lot of discussion debate among the school, subcommittee. So here we go, recommended fiscal models. We're gonna start with key terms and I will apologize for anyone who knows all this, but. It's important as we talk to the broader audience, we sort of set some groundwork here. And operations, when we talk about the operations, operating budget. These are the funds that a district needs basically to, to run itself, things like salaries, insurance, supplies and materials. It doesn't include capital. Investments, grants or town contributions which might be on the maintenance or insurance side. The capital funds, as you all know, are more significant investments. We've talked, we talked a little bit about the chart of accounts. In the subcommittee, which is the DESI regulations around how. Various costs are coded, but in effect a capital fund is, is something which has. A higher dollar figure and has a longevity to it of more than a year. It's important that folks know that both districts borrow. Have borrowed, all district borrow to invest in things typically large building projects. But they also have annual minor capital which gets treated as part of the operating budget. On an annual basis, those would be things would be normal upkeep and maintenance. And finally, the last term is important is the assessment, which is what we actually charge out. To the towns and that's basically. What you're paying for operating budgets, what you're paying for capital. Minus any revenue you might be receiving to offset those costs. So your, your gross budget minus your revenues equals your net budget, which you'll see in a minute, and those are the assessments which goes out, go out to the towns. So my very rudimentary schematic here is if we start with a district budget and we have sort of two buckets, the operations, the operating budget, a capital budget. We back out revenue that, that we receive, things like state aid, school choice. Tuition revenues, any reimbursement from the Mass School Building Authority, things like circuit breaker, which is a special ed relief fund. And then that nets out in a smaller operations budget and a smaller capital budget, and this is actually gets assessed out to the towns. So the reason that we talk about these two buckets is they are really assessed slightly differently. So the operation budget will get assessed out to the eight towns using a methodology. And then the capital budget will also get assessed out to the eight towns using a methodology, and that's why we'll be talking about these two separate. Methodologies today, within each of these are sort of. Parts to the methodology which we're working through and so hopefully it'll somewhat make sense as we travel through today. So a couple of reference points, this is the current fiscal year. Just so folks have sort of a benchmark. The gross operating budget for Berkshire Hills is a little, a less than 32 million. You back out the six and a half million in revenues and their net operating assessments of the town is about 25 million. Southern Berkshire is 17.7 million, back out three and a half in revenue. Their net op, operating, so the towns is 14. If you were to total this all together, which is we're gonna be looking at merger models, it's just under $40 million. In operating assessments to the towns. Now additionally, both districts do have capital. I just put this on the slide so you could see it. Berkshire Hills is in the final year of, of large. Capital bond that paid for. The middle school and the elementary school. And so in this particular year, they paid out 1.7 million. They were reimbursed from the MSBA 1.1 million, and so the net debt assessment out to the town was around $660,000. They also have the non-borrowing. Capital, which is extraordinary maintenance of around $300,000. Southern Berkshire has ongoing debt for some projects related to roofs and boilers. And so in this past year, they paid out, sorry FY23, they paid out $334,000. And then they also do. Budget for non-debt capital, which again is part of regular ongoing assessment and investment in the buildings. We'll get into that a little bit more, so again, capital and assessments and operating. So we're gonna focus for the first part of this presentation on the operating budget methodology. And Matt and Lucy and Nadine, if, if you need to jump in at any point, please do, I'm going too fast, too slow. So we're gonna be talking about concept called the safety valve. And the committee worked hard on refining this particular. Idea and the question that you probably wanna, we wanted to make sure we answered was. Why do we need a safety valve? And the, the reason we need safety valve is to avoid dramatic changes. To any individual town's assessment. By smoothing year-to-year shifts, one of the hardest things. For towns to, to manage our, our dramatic assessments which occur or. Which might increase in a particular year. So the idea behind the, the safety valve is really to smooth the year-to-year change. And this is one of the reasons why we need the safety valve, at least out of the gate. That is because there is a difference in spending between the two districts. Above required. Contributions. And so. Both districts, all towns have to pay. A required contribution, but they also pay and contribute more to the district beyond what's required. And it is in that last block of money spending above the required. That we see differences between the two districts, and so. When we average the two districts together, it creates an imbalance, and so the safety valve helps to smooth that out. And that really is why we had to implement this particular methodology. So this particular graph is very busy, but I think you'll see the basic idea behind it once I call it out. This is basically the, all eight towns plotted on their assessments based on a percent increase. Over about a, I guess a 10-year period. And what I want to just call out is when we look at historical spending and we project forward. If we don't use a safety valve methodology, we see a large set of spikes that go up for a set of towns. And a set of spikes that go down. This is compared to applying a safety valve at 2%. In which you don't see that spike, it basically compresses the change. At least in the first merger year and I, I think creates a degree of. Of insurance and balance forward, but what would happen if we didn't have this, sorry. Is that we would see a large increase. If we merged in with the eight towns in the Southern Berkshire, five-town assessments. And we'd see a decrease in the Berkshire Hills. And so the safety valve helps to sort of bring those. Those, those high peaks and valleys closer to the center. The way the safety valve works, and this is just for illustration, this is a make-believe example, just to be clear. If we have eight towns here. We look at a percent increase. And we set a cap that we want to assure no town. Goes beyond, so if we compare last year to this year and we say, we're gonna set a cap. At around 4.1% and no town will have an assessment that goes. That is higher than 4.1%. In this particular model, you can see that one, two, three, four, or five towns. Are actually over the 4.1 or 2% cap. So that's a problem because we see this one particular town that's got an assessment increase of 8%. What the safety valve does. Is it takes this excess money, these towns that have been assessed. Beyond the cap and it redistributes those funds to the towns that are under the cap, and so what happens here. Is after you redistribute these funny, these funds, you see that all the towns end up at or below the cap. And so our safety valve slash cap is going to be a limiter. On how much any individual town can increase in a single year. Again, this is just for illustration purposes, we're gonna jump into the actuals in just a second. Alright, so the walkthrough on the methodology. The assumptions, just a few things is we included in the operating budget transportation. Again, evaluated the projections using historical data and discussions with staff. We included the merger savings of one and a half million dollars. That reflects also pay scale alignment. Between the two districts. And we use the midpoint range of estimated savings which were, I think as high as 2.1 million, we. Chose a number in the middle of the merger savings that were applied in. The operating costs are based on five-year rolling averages of the required minimum contribution, and again, this is something that. Southern Berkshire currently uses and that the subcommittee felt. Was a really good strategy to help again to smooth. Changes that might occur on a year-to-year basis by using a five-year average. We applied a safety valve of 2% and Nadine's gonna speak to that in just a minute. Again, revenue projections from FY24 are based on historical data and staff input. And then all of this, the required minimum contributions based on projected foundation enrollment. Things like per pupil spending and municipal growth factors. We have a set of worksheets that are gonna be provided at the end of this presentation. Which are gonna provide a lot more detail and backup. And we'll have a much more comprehensive list of assumptions. That Matt used as we were building this. So walkthrough of the operating methodology, there's a couple of parts to it, first of all. There's a required methodology by the Department of Education. In which every town is required to contribute. A certain amount towards the district's budget. Through something called the required minimum contribution, that's a combination of. The foundation enrollment, which is students who live in the towns, reside in the towns. And then how those students are categorized, what grade level they're in, whether they have special needs. And then the second part of that is. Our, the Department of Ed and the state looks at. Basically the wealth of the town, the amount of property, wealth or value that occur, that exists in the town. And also the income of the residents of the town, and all that is in this really crazy spreadsheet, which I didn't include in this presentation. You're welcome to look through, but there's a required contribution. Which regardless of what we do, will always be part. Of the methodology as it is today in both districts. Part B is, once you get to the required contribution. As we showed you earlier, both districts spend money beyond the required minimum. And so what we're recommending is that we use a five-year rolling average. As the required minimum contribution. To allocate the amount which is above the required. And we'll do that proportionally by town, you'll see that in just a second. And then when needed. We apply the safety valve, and the safety valve again is a cap. That limits the amount that a town's assessment can increase in a given year. Alright, so let's take a look at just how this plays out. In sort of big picture first, so if you start with a total budget, and I want to be crystal clear that. We are gonna be working from this point forward with projected FY26 numbers. This would be the first year of the merger. So it would, it is really the combining of all eight towns into a single budget. So we take the total budget, which we determine really by looking at the two individual budgets now and combining them together with the savings as we said. 55.7 million dollars. We back out the revenues, which is 11.2. We end up with 44 and a half. Million dollars, which is what we refer to as the net budget. The net budget then gets broken into two pieces, as I mentioned, part A. Is the required contribution, the part that the state will do regardless of what. Sort of secondary methodology we have. And then part B. Which is the amount of money which we spend beyond. And then part B, which is the amount of money which we spend beyond the required, which in this case is 20 half, 25 million dollars. And what we're doing with part B is we're using the five-year rolling. Sorry, my mouse is a little wonky, required minimum contribution. And then we're applying the safety valve when needed. All right. So total budget minus revenue nets out our budget. And then all that is assessed out to the towns using part A and part B. And then when needed, the safety valve. All right. So I'm going to take a breather just for a second and have Nadine jump in and just talk a little bit about how we developed the 2% safety valve and why it was used.
Thanks Jake. The safety valve could have been 1%, 2%, 3%. We, we looked initially at 1% and using the 1% with the method, it took 12 to 15 years before all towns became sort of level and in balance with each other. And some members of our committee felt that that was too long. They're, they felt that their towns would be carrying the lion's share for too long. And there was constant discussion about the fact that if we're one district, shouldn't we all be looking at this at a more equal manner? 3% was too short. It didn't allow for smoothing over time to make the merger acceptable to some of the towns. So it was another compromise that the committee made of 2% where we roughly reach a balance in somewhere between five to seven years. Merger takes time for all to transition and we think that we need time to switch from an us and them philosophy to a we, both in practice and in managing the financial piece. So Jake's now going to take us through on how the numbers have worked.
So now we're going to apply everything I've been talking about. So we have a gross operating budget of 55.7 million. We back out 11, too. We have net assessments going out to the towns of 44.5 million dollars. I know this is a lot of numbers for everyone to take in. And we've trimmed this down, but hopefully this will make a little bit of sense. So part A again is the state formula. There's really not a way around this. We're going to be doing this, a required minimum. This is based on foundation enrollment and the town's wealth and income. And so the required minimum is calculated for each town. In this case, it's calculated out at 19.2 million dollars. We back that out of the 44 and a half, which is the budget. And what's left is 25.2 million. That's the above required balance that we now got to deal with in part B. All right. So onward to part B. We take that balance forward. And then what we do is we look at the allocation of required minimum over a five-year period average. And we look at what percentage of that five-year average is attributable to each towns. We look at the total, what the town has a contribution and we convert that to a percentage. In this case, this percentage then is applied to the 25.2 million. And we end up with the assessment in part B to each of the towns. So you can see how Alfred only had a 1.1%. You know, percentage of the overall spending above required. And so when we take a 1.1% of the 25.2 million there contribution above required would be $272,000. Okay. So we've got part A and part B. And now we're going to move on to the safety valve. And this is where we check to see whether any town's assessment increased at, at a really high rate. So again, this is where we apply the safety valve when needed. We looked total amount to be assessed, 44.5 million. We looked at the prior year and we asked the question, how much did the budget increase? When we compare this 44.5 to the prior year, there was an increase in the total assessment to the eight towns of 1.2%. We then have our safety valve increment, which Nadine just shared with you all is 2%. And so our total maximum increase that any town can go up, what I refer to as the cap is 3.2%. You add on the increase over the prior year, plus the increment to get to the 3.2. And so that will be the maximum that any one individual town can increase from last year to this year in the model that we're, that we're using. So now we'll apply that. So we look at the total operating assessments as parts A and B. And then we compare, we look at, we add all those numbers together. Again, 44.5 million dollars. We keep coming up with that same total. That's the saver consistent. We look at this number as compared to the year prior. What we can see when we did this, we had some really large increases in our five Southern Berkshire towns. 6%, sorry. Almost 18% in Egremont, whereas in the Berkshire Hills towns, we had a decrease. So now we apply the cap. Do the amount over 3.2% that these five districts account for is about 1.5 billion dollars. But if you go back to that graph or that bar graph where we were over the line, we got to take all that money over the line. We gotta redistribute it to the districts, to the towns that are under the line. And so you're going to see these amounts moving, the red amounts moving to the green. So we redistribute again, the over to the under. So once we do that, so you can see where the adjustments are made. Some towns go down. So Alfred, our five towns went down because they, we had to reduce their assessment because they were well over the 3.2% cap. And then, and those are all in, in parentheses to indicate a decrease. And then that money was redistributed to the five Berkshire Hills towns, which were under the cap. What we end up with is every single community ends up with a percent change from last year to this year, which is 3.2% or lower. And just to put this all side by side, before the safety valve, you can see these numbers. Increases of 6%, 17 and a half, after the safety valve, 3.3.2, negative half a percent for Great Barrington. They had gone down almost 6%. Obviously they've absorbed additional funds. So now they're half a percent lower in the year prior. I put this on a graph just so folks could see it visually, kind of a different way. The red is before the safety valve and these are percent changes by town from last year to this year, from FY25 to FY26. We have a 3.2% cap, which again is a 1.2% increase. Plus the 2% safety valve, that's our line. No one can be above it. And so we redistribute the money in the red to the towns that are under. And you can see that all the towns after the safety valve are in the green, which is 3.2% or lower. So that is the operating model. Shall I move on to capital? Yes, I see a nod.
Yes, please. Yes.
The second part of the conversation is capital. There's three pieces, the capital, there's legacy or current debt. There's paying for the new high school and then there's future debt, which falls into two categories, district downtowns and own schools and town-owned schools. We're going to tackle these in three pieces. First one's going to be pretty easy. So legacy debt, Berkshire Hills has capital debt service on the two schools, as I mentioned, that will be paid off this year in 2024. So they have no legacy debt, zero dollars after 2024. Southern Berkshire has legacy debt that will continue through 2032. Have a roof and boiler project. I think their assessment in 2023 was about $344,000. It'll decline to 260 by 2032. And so the subcommittee's recommendation is that the Southern Berkshire towns continue to pay for this debt through 2032. So they would be assigned that debt. You know, even with the, with the merger, they would own that debt. And then both districts have non-debt capital, which is operating cost. And so all of that bundled together. And that would be portioned using the operating methodology. So that would be the kinds of things where you saw, which are maintenance costs and things of that sort. And then finally, I believe we've shared the outcome of the OPEB study. The post-employee benefit study, and there really is no impact. And so there's no legacy debt we have to deal with. So the only takeaway from this particular graph on legacy debt is that Southern Berkshire towns, five towns will continue to pay the debt that they currently have on the books through 2032. And this is their debt schedule. I apologize for this highlight here. It's an older. And this may be updated, but this is just gives you a snapshot of what Southern Berkshire is paying on the outstanding that they have through 2032. And you can see it declines on about 262. All right. So that's our legacy debt. Again, recommendations that the legacy debt Southern Berkshire owns stays with them. Onto the new high school, which is capital topic number two. So the estimated cost of the high school, and I, I think at the last meeting, I shared a memo with you on how these costs were derived. $90 million for a three-town high school with 485 students. And $100 million for an eight-town high school with 620 students. And again, the methods of estimating are detailed in the memo. And this included Berkshire Hills work. It occurred as recently as 2019. We looked at MSBA data. We calculated space using three different methodologies. And again, you can read the memo, but it, it is the foundation of how we got to these particular numbers. We're asked a lot of questions about how are you coming up with $100 million? And does that reflect what's going on in the world today around inflation and construction costs? And hopefully the memo will just provide a little more information if folks are looking for that. Again, the assumptions on the new high school, $100 million project. 25-year debt service at three and a quarter interest rates. The debt is going to be assigned using equalized values, which I'll talk about in just a second. And the first debt payment will begin in 2026. So again, these are assumptions. Some of these could potentially change. But these are assumptions upon which the capital estimations were built. We're often asked, what is EQV? Equalized valuation. This is right off the state's website. Is really just the full and fair cash value of property that exists in a town. Both commercial, resident, residential, the state works for local municipalities and towns. They revisit EQV. Probably, I'm sure there's folks on this call have a much better sense of EQV than I do. But I did put a link in here if people want more information, but we just want to make sure that folks understood that this is an effect property value. That's a quick definition. All right. So away we go. High school, $100 million high school. Combined high school. The subcommittee is recommending that we do a 90, 10% allocation model, 90% would be would be assigned to the Berkshire Hills towns and 10% of the cost would be assigned to the Southern Berkshire towns. This breaks down to $90 million, 10 million. This is easy math for most folks. This is where it gets a little bit more complicated. Then we have to back out what we anticipate the Mass School Building Authority will reimburse as part of a partnership with the community towards the high school. If there's base aid of 48 and a half percent, that number could go up. And then there's a regional incentive aid of 6% that the MSBA will provide if a new region forms. It's an incentive for regions to form. So we assign the 48 and a half percent on the Berkshire Hillside, the 6% on the Southern Berkshire side. And this tallies out to about 41 and a half million dollars. On the Berkshire Hillside and $4 million on the Southern Berkshire side. It would be filed against those five towns and 41 against three towns. The annual debt service on that is two and a half million for the three towns and 236,000 for the five towns. In addition, the committee did make a decision to do a 1% shift of this 90, 10 between the years of 2033 and 2038. Why did we choose 2033? Because that's the year that Southern Berkshire's existing debt comes off the books. And so they would continue obviously to contribute, they would have potentially more, you know, space to contribute towards the, the high school project. And so 90, 10 then over time becomes 85, 15. And calculated out, if you were to project this out to FY38, the debt service for the three towns would be 2.3 million and for the five towns would be about $400,000. But this is the 90, 10 model that many folks have heard about, and this is the math to get to where we are. So I've got a couple of slides that we've worked on as a subcommittee that just illustrate what happens if we decide to go at this alone. So if we don't build a high school together, Berkshire Hills alone, estimating that it would be a $90 million project. They would back out the 48 and a half percent aid on the 98 million. Again, there would not be the 6% regionalization incentive. That would be 46.3 million at the local level that they, the three towns would pay for. Annual debt service would be 2.7 million. And again, just comparing out 100 million, they pay 90% less 48 on 100 million, less 4 million, Southern Berkshire contributes. Their liability is 41.48 million and their debt service is two and a half million. But actually is cheaper for Berkshire Hills to build this high school in concert with the Southern Berkshire towns, you know, straight up than it is alone. Then we're going to flip the script and look at the other side of the coin, which is Southern Berkshire. And Southern Berkshire separate, if Berkshire Hills builds their high school and they include five or six vocational chapter 74 programs. And they have 29 students from the five towns attend these chapter 74 programs. And this, this asterisk here, the 29 students is based on a 20% enrollment pattern, which is fairly consistent statewide. We've seen numbers higher than that. It's higher than that in Pittsfield. At a cost of $26,000 per student, which is born at the town level would equal an app, an annual operations liability of $761,000. That's if 29 students go to a Berkshire Hills built new high school, chapter 74 programs. This is what the five Southern Berkshire towns would be paying collectively. And we've got this broken down by town as an estimate. Again, compare this out with 100 million, 10% six aid, $4 million capital bond over 25 years and the debt service is 236. And the first year, as you saw, goes up to $400,000 by 2038. So again, we wanted to illustrate that there's a potential heavier fiscal liability for potentially sending students into chapter 74 programs if the high school were built independent in the three towns. Then you just did a couple of snapshots. And it's really important to see that how this plays out at the town level. Sheffield obviously would have the largest number of students potentially go into CBTE programs because they have the largest enrollment in the five towns. And you can see how the cost of the new high school in terms of capital cost is compared to potential vocational chapter 74 cost stack up for Southern Berkshire and then the Berkshire Hillside. We did the eight towns together as the blue bar. The three towns apart is the orange bar. And you can see that they were paying more if they build a high school independently than with the eight towns. If they build a high school independently than with the eight towns. So in some ways, what we're arguing is that it's potential win win for both communities. Alright, so that is the new high school, and I'm gonna just pause it for one second. And then we're going to go to the last section of capital. Which is future capital cost, and it's, this is fairly straightforward. For any district owned building, we're going to just assign capital cost based on EQV. And so this is a snapshot of EQV as it currently exists. So that folks understood how towns. Compare out in terms of their property value, property value proportionally. The example we use, which is very mild example of a one million dollar. Bond would place out to seventy five. Thousand dollars annually, which would break down this way across the eight towns. So for any future cost in district owned buildings, let's say fifteen years from now. Mount Everett needs a new roof or. Muddy Brook needs a new roof. All eight towns would be contributing through EQV to those capital costs. And then finally, we have this unique situation of town owned buildings. New Marlboro and Egremont. And what we basically did is we did a reserve, a reverse ninety ten. In which if we were to. Go into a situation which we had to borrow money. To invest in those particular schools. Ninety percent of the cost would be borne by the five Southern Berkshire towns and ten percent would be borne by Berkshire Hills. But we'd have that same shift of one percent annually. Which would ultimately result in the same balance of eighty five fifteen. Which was the reversal we saw in the high school. And I think the idea there was to. Retain a level of consistency in both of the. The borrowing models. And again, we would use EQV as a mechanism to a portion within. The five towns within the three towns. So that's our three buckets of capital, legacy, new high school and future costs. This is sort of all tallied up. And it's interesting. To sort of see this town by town. Did I leave somebody off here? Three, four? No, I have eight. Thank goodness. The new high school costs across the eight towns are listed here. This is for FY twenty six, and then the legacy debt, which is going to be borne by the five. Southern Berkshire towns, you can kind of see how the spending stacks up. So there's no, no orange bar. Next to Great Barrington, Stockbridge or West Stockbridge, because they wouldn't be paying for the Southern Berkshire legacy debt. What they would however be paying for is a big chunk of the high school. Right? So I'm going to put this all into just three more slides and then we're done. This is a little bit of a confusing graph, but it's similar to the graph I showed you earlier, and you'll have time to look at all these. If we don't merge, when we took the entire picture, operating and capital, all smooshed together. We see a lot of communities spiking, so we see assessments going up. And again, keep in mind that you're in FY twenty six, you're adding the cost of a new high school, so you're going to see a spike. When we do a merger, we see these spikes here and this range right here compressed a bit. You're, you know, you're going to ask the question. Who are these two communities here? These two communities are Stockbridge and Great Barrier, and I think actually it's West Dockbridge. Which based on the EQV adjustment to the. Berkshire Hills Regional Agreement play out with these communities, particularly Stockbridge bearing a big chunk of the burden. Or at least proportionally. So all tallies together, this is the full picture. Merger versus no change. I broke it into Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills. And what you can see is we have capital. Cost and then we have the operating and the vocational tech will combine together. So you'll see, the good news is that in the merger, in the case of a merger, the expenses are less than they are no merger. We would certainly hope for that and expect that to be the case. And you can see how the capital ends up being really a small. Portion of the entire spending package. When you're really looking at this, and this has been noted by the subcommittee members. In many meetings, how the capital, even though it is. A huge investment on an annual basis is actually not. You know, the bulk of the cost that that ends up in assessments back to the towns. So the last slide I'm just going to show you is that. Matt Abrahams has done an excellent job and. He's put together summary worksheets. On on each of the scenarios, he's got a summary for operating. The summary for capital and then details in each of those, and then a total assessment package, both within the merger scenario and the no merger scenario. So that all the slides that I showed you tonight. Have a lot of content behind them. These sheets actually are not even as detailed as. His massive spreadsheets, which we have been sharing with people if they want to look at them, if they want to look at the. The magic behind. You know, these these findings, and we're happy to share those too. So that is the entire presentation and package, and I think I'm just about right on time.
Good job, Jake. Good job. So for those who have attended all fifteen of those finance subcommittee meetings. What Jake just presented is a summary. Of those thirty or forty hours. Of finance subcommittee meetings and conclusions and recommendations. But it's still a ton of stuff. And so. For those who haven't attended those meetings in particular. I'd like to open the floor first to them. To ask whatever questions you have about what's been presented. Recognizing that some of the questions we'll probably be able to answer tonight. And other of the questions, we may take back and prepare responses for you. For next meeting, but. I think this is a good time to. Take a pause and ask for questions first from those who. Aren't on the finance subcommittee. And I've just been hit with a lot of. A lot of content, a lot of information. But again, Jake, I really appreciate. The tremendous amount of work you put into this presentation. Trying to simplify what is not simple. But putting it into graphs that I think really well illustrate. What we were designing these methodologies to accomplish. So thank you for that. And thank you to Matt. For all of your work over these last many, many months. George.
Thank you, Lucy. I have. Attended several of the finance committee meetings and. There's been a chorus of praise for them, which I agree with. I've got several. Kind of questions that may be frequently asked questions. And I know we discussed about that earlier. And so I'll go by page. And I'll be actually quite brief. And I would be happy to. Provide any more detail, perhaps not in this meeting. But. For either the subcommittee or or the whole board. The first on page twenty four. When. There was. The only identification of savings. Which I thought was one of the. Motivating factors from the beginning. There was one point five with related to salary adjustment. And I think people would. Want to know more specifically exactly what that means. I'm not sure if, well, I know Charlie is here. And if Joan Rogers still is. And I think the three of us. On page twenty seven. Will recall the time. That we had. Several summers ago. Working on what. Finance Subcommittee refers to as the safety valve of two percent. And we were on a committee. That did come up with the smoothing. Adjustment mechanism. And my recollection. Is that it was more than two percent. And also. I believe has been quite successful. The, on page thirty one. When. People in my town see that seventeen percent. You can imagine the reaction to that. And so I would appreciate any advice. In the frequently asked questions about how to explain that. Particularly given the. Twenty seven. Page twenty seven, safety valve issue. On page thirty seven. This is another safety valve. Kind of issue. It's certainly a frequently asked question. Is it? It looks like Southern Berkshire. Is. Being punished for maintaining its buildings. And that explains the debt that. Southern Berkshire has, which is relatively small. For its roof and its furnace. And. I believe. Tim was with us earlier. And on page thirty nine. I have. From the beginning, and I know him. Who knows much more about this than I do. Has been very uncomfortable with this hundred million dollar figure. And. No matter how we couch it. By any comparative. Analysis, it looks low to me. And. The, on page forty four. The. Assumption of the twenty nine student CVTE. That's a pretty big number, twenty six thousand two hundred thirty two. For. Any town's budget, I believe. And. We don't have a lot of. Students currently. Although I suspect there is demand and. Frankly, I'm surprised twenty nine is so low. But perhaps that's because exactly what programs. Will be offered is still unclear, but we do have currently one student. For which annually. She's an agricultural program in Connecticut, and we pay sixty eight hundred dollars annually. And on page forty seven. That reverse ten ninety. If indeed there is a unified district. It's going to be a pretty hard sell. So those are just some initial comments. And. I want to, I just got this about four thirty this afternoon. And so I haven't really had time to. Absorb it all, but I suspect people that. Have had their first degrees at this. As both Nadine and Jake. And you mentioned. It's a lot to absorb. But I, I think the job has been well done, so. Congratulations.
Thanks, George. Jake, do you want to walk through the the questions and provide responses?
I guess.
Yeah, I think you should, because I have some of the questions. I think can easily be responded to.
So we just refreshed my memory. I am listening. I'm just.
Okay, so the first was the one point five million of savings on page twenty four. Where's that coming from and how does that reflect the base scale alignment?
So just so maybe we can hear Matt for just a second. Matt, can you give a quick answer to that?
Yep, I can. So going back to when we did the initial modeling and we focused on Model A two, I think it was called. When we put that together months ago, we identified a range of savings based on a few variables. The range was, I believe, this is from memory, one point five million dollars to two point one million dollars. That did not factor in the adjustment to teachers' pay. To that we have discussed since then. To bring Southern Berkshire teachers onto the Berkshire Hills scale, or at least the analysis that we've done relative to that. That accounted for an increased expense of about three hundred thousand dollars. So if you take the three hundred thousand off of the original range, your range of one point five to two point one is now down to one point two. To one point eight. And as Jake mentioned during his presentation this evening. When we chose to focus on a savings number to include in the runs that we have. Done and are now being presented to you. We chose the number right in the middle, which that's how we got to the one point five. So the one point five represents the midpoint range. Of the the midpoint of the adjusted range of one point two to one point eight million dollars.
Okay, then the next two questions I think can be combined. They are page twenty seven and page thirty one. And George was concerned about the seventeen point five percent. Increase shown on slide thirty one for Egremont. Which is the number before the safety valve is applied, George. So. If we didn't have a safety valve built into this mechanism. That would be the increase. But what the subcommittee is recommending. Is having a safety valve of two percent. Which would then, in this hypothetical. Where the adjustment is going up one point two percent. Bring Egremont down to three point two percent. So. You don't have to explain the seventeen point five, because that's, that's not the methodology we're posing. Once you apply the safety valve, Egremont comes down to the cap. That's been established. Matt, do I have that right?
Yes, everything you said was accurate.
Okay. And then the next question punishing Southern Berkshire for maintaining the building on page thirty seven. Can you respond to that, Jake?
Yeah, well, I, I think the, yeah, I mean, I really lean more on the subcommittee. Because we had a lot of deliberation around. How to manage that legacy. Debt, and we did consider the possibility of combining all debt. But I think the idea was that. Because Berkshire Hills towns would be absorbing a substantial. You know, fiscal investment in the new high school. And we've really limited that impact to the Southern Berkshire towns that we would carry that. Legacy that forward. Through until twenty thirty two and then, you know, make the adjustment after that. I'm not really sure I'm answering the question. I didn't.
Well, that, how about Nadine? Would you like to respond to this? Because you had a, a strong point of view on whether. The Southern Berkshire debt should remain with Southern Berkshire or be folded. Into the combined district. Given that we were asking the Berkshire Hills towns to pick up ninety percent of the. The cost of the new high school.
Yeah, I mean, that was a topic that we deliberated on quite a bit as to. You know, Tom Bercle presented to us that, you know, in a business merger, you would just consolidate all the debt into into one. And which seems fair and reasonable if Southern Berkshire towns were willing to. Equally share in the cost of the new building. Because our original conversations way back in September of two thousand nineteen. Was that Southern Berkshire would not have to pay for the new building. We felt that this was a reasonable way of moving forward. With our legacy debt. And carrying a small portion of the debt for the new building. In that it was offering our five town children the opportunity for CBT program, CBTE programs. So it was a compromise. It may not have been the compromise. So it was a compromise. It may not have been the compromise that Mr. McGurn would see appropriate, but it's what the committee and the alternates that participated. And one thing I didn't mention is that with each vote that we took as a committee, it wasn't just the five voting members. I did a straw poll and included every member that was participating in the conversations because it gave a fairer representation of all the towns and not just the three or four that were represented by the actual assigned committee members.
Okay, and then on slide thirty-nine, understand that some believe the cost of the new high school is going to be more than a hundred million dollars, which it may be. Hundred million dollars is used for purpose of modeling this assessment methodology. And it's grounded in the five different data points that are listed on page thirty-nine that Jake explained in that detailed memo that we circulated, I think, at the last meeting to the full board. So I understand that some think the estimate is low. And if you think the estimate is going to be, you know, you think the actual cost is going to be ten percent higher, twenty percent higher, thirty percent higher, you can just adjust these numbers by that amount. But as we saw in many of the slides tonight, the capital portion of what gets assessed to the member towns is a very, very small fraction of the overall assessment to each of the towns, even with a new high school. So I would just keep that in mind as you're thinking about whether a hundred million dollars is too low. I don't think we have to go into that memo again, because I think Jake has already explained it. Twenty-nine students. And Jake explained where that comes from. And then the ten ninety, I think you explained already, Jake.
Yeah, I mean, and just so folks understand, I mean, the twenty-nine students is a number we debated was higher. And I think, you know, even you and I, Lucy, as recently as two days ago, we're debating this number.
Yeah.
And I was saying it's higher. And we, I think, went more conservative with it. So twenty-nine is a smaller number than we had in the original model.
Right.
Lucy, can I just touch, can I just touch on George's question regarding the cost of the tuition? You know, Sheffield sends anywhere from three to seven kids to, who's the tonic for the ag program? And, you know, we pay somewhere between eleven and seventeen thousand, depending upon the needs of the child. Because with tuition programs such as this, if the child has additional needs, the towns compensate them. So I'm sure you're, you know, scratching your head at the cost of twenty-six thousand dollars, but it is going to be significantly more sophisticated CBT programs, and they cost more.
Jake, where does the twenty-six thousand?
Yeah, yeah. So there's, the state sets a tuition rate for vocational. And then in addition to that, the town has to pay for transportation. Then there is the possibility that a capital assessment can be assigned beyond that. So there's three potential ways in which a town could be assessed on a vocational student. And again, that's probably a relatively conservative number based on what we've been, and Frank's on the line right now, too. So, yeah, I think that's, if anything, we probably estimated transportation a little lower, and we didn't really put in a heavy capital assessment, which certainly could be something that Berkshire Hills could petition for.
Okay, we've got Kim and then Patrick.
So I have a couple of points, and most of them agree with Mr. McGurn. I was doing my own research on this, and average state costs to send students to a VOTE not in their town, from what I can tell, is average across the state, sixteen to seventeen thousand. So you're quoting a figure of nine to ten thousand, higher than what the state average is. So I'm not quite understanding that one. I also know that, I have said before, that seven hundred and eighty-six per square foot was, you know, a reason, what MS, hold on. My phone's going off. MSBA was saying is the average cost on the school bill, which does not agree with your numbers, but whatever. And then I know a couple of tech schools that have got built recently that were a hundred and fifty dollars more than that number per square foot. So I do have a little bit of worry about the cost. And I also think that MSBA is capped at three ninety-three per square foot on what they can get out. Am I wrong? But needless to say, I don't, I know these are modeling numbers, but I feel that modeling numbers are misleading. And I feel like we're being held hostage or by saying twenty-six thousand for a tuition cost.
Yeah. So what I had said at the beginning of the, the meeting was that I wanted to use this time to get questions out on the table. And we're gonna have, yeah, we're gonna have a whole meeting.
The question was, where are you getting that cost of twenty-six thousand? And really, where are you getting the cost? Both my questions are, where are you getting the cost on these figures? I know you have data points, but I want to know the cost of tuition, where you are getting it from.
Lucy, if it'd be helpful, I could provide a sheet related to that. There are my calculations, and I have backup for it.
Okay, that'd be great. Matt, thank you. Patrick?
A couple of things I just wanted to comment on. We have two students from Stockbridge going to Taconic next year for their VOTE vocational program. And when you add in the cost of transportation, we budgeted eighty thousand dollars for two students. So this pushback that twenty-six is too low, too high, rather, I think it's perhaps far too low. And the second point I would make is if you go to slide fifty and you look at the merger total assessments, there's one town that gets up to twenty-five percent increase. This is a new floor, remind you. Even though it looks like a spike, that's a new floor for every single year going forward. And, and I just feel like if, if the school is under budgeted in terms of capital costs, that is going to impact the three towns who are paying ninety percent of the school. And if you look at slide number, on page fifty, what you're seeing is that there's really, frankly, one town that is seeing its total assessment climb nearly twenty-five percent. And that gets worse if, if, if the last speaker is right and the costs go up higher. I think a lot of us worked really hard to come up with a compromise here. And, 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 you know, I just want to kind of say that, you know, you know, that is the slide that shows, I think, where the most, you know, on a delta basis where the burden is falling. Thank you.
And that's Great Barrington you're referring to? Patrick, you're muted. I'm sorry.
I'm looking at Stockbridge on the page fifty slides, where the, where the jump is twenty-five percent in the assessment.
Okay, got it.
And that's a new floor. So every year going forward, it's twenty-five percent higher than fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay. Frank, can you respond to the, the VOTE?
Yes. Cost. Right, yes, thank you. Right now, Berkshire Hills tuition, they're getting twenty thousand eight hundred. In the last three years, it's gone up twice, for, actually, for most of the schools in this area. So that's just the tuition. And then you have, you do have the transportation. You could have capital costs. And as Jake knows, when we were in Pittsfield, on top of that, if the student has an IEP, you're really looking at a lot more than twenty-six thousand dollars a year for a student, you know, to, to do a CBTE program. And again, there is no denying any student that wants CBTE. So just, you know, you, you never know. I mean, you could have five students, or you could have thirty-five students in a year. And you could have fifteen from Sheffield or ten from Alfer. It does, you'd never know. And it's up to the town to be able to, you know, say, oh, man, we got to eat this. So just so that you understand, it's by town and not by district.
Thanks. Don?
Yes. Lucy mentioned, and it's very important, that the capital aspect of this arrangement is, to quote her, very, very small. I agree with that. And I am concerned, and I'm asking that we think about, it's my question, whether what has been proposed at the moment is going to end up with a capital tail wagging and appropriations, operating appropriations to a negative result. The people who come to our town meetings are generally the best informed. We have to assume, I think, that those people will remember that the five towns were invited into this process on the representation, that there would be no capital contribution at all. They will then also be aware that Jake proposed the ninety-ten and that the ten percent was based on the additional cost of building the building. And they will remember, I think, that after the six percent is taken off, the incentive, that would bring it down to four million. And they're going to be asking, I think, why the Finance Committee came up with the idea of increasing the capital costs to the five towns from first from zero, then to four million, then to ten percent, and then finally, for fifteen percent, sixteen percent for the majority of the years of payment. People are going to be asking those questions. And I think we need to have an answer to it. And we have to ask ourselves whether the answer should be no contribution at all or at best, a true ten percent minus six without this one percent incentive. I hope we can debate this further at our next meeting.
We will, we will, Don. Okay, we're at seven thirty-three PM. I promised that I would open up again for public comments. So if we have public comments, we'll take ten minutes of that. But again, if you have additional questions that you want answered between now and our next meeting, please send them in to Jake, and we'll be sure to get responses to you. The sheet, Matt, that you have, if you could send that to Jake, and we'll get it out to everyone on the calculation of the twenty-six thousand plus. That would be helpful. Any additional backup information that people want, please send your question to Jake, and we'll get it, we'll get the, the information to you. Okay, so on public comments, we've got Sharon and we've got Julie. So Sharon first, and then Julie.
Thank you. I just want to put into perspective the model of Berkshire Hills going it alone versus the consolidation. And I'm for the consolidation, just to make that clear. But almost ten years ago, NASDAQ suggested we needed to build a high school for seven hundred students. I challenged that number to no avail. But remember that the new number for the three towns is four hundred and eighty-five students. That's substantially less. So when you do a, you know, with consolidation, without consolidation, and you use the number a hundred million dollars either way, I, for one, would not be for building a a hundred million dollar school for four hundred and eighty-five students. So, you know, that's just a point of a comparison, so that we're using, I'm, I'm not saying that we know whether it's going to be a hundred million dollars or whatever the number is going to be. But the number of students that we would support with the three towns would be substantially less than before and substantially less than what we talked about when we started this whole discussion. It's four hundred and eighty-five students from DESI as well as NASDAQ. And for the eight towns, six hundred and fifty. That's still less than the seven hundred that we talked about before. So just think about that. And I'm not saying you should adjust their charts or whatever, but perhaps you should, you know, because it wouldn't be the same size.
Yeah, so Sharon, in Jake's memo on the high school costs and how he got to his estimate, he has a whole section that addresses the most recent MSBA findings on enrollment, which was four hundred and eighty-five for the three towns alone, and six twenty, not six fifty, six twenty, right, six twenty for the combined district. And Jake's memo notes that his projections were based on a seven hundred student school. He did those before we got the MSBA numbers. And that it may very well be that a hundred million is more, right? Than it's going to cost for six twenty. So, so it's not that we're ignoring that. We specifically called it out. And we won't know, right, what that number is until the school's designed and it's, it's costed out. We're just doing the best we can with the information and numbers that we have in hand right now. We're not promising that number is going to be the number at the end of the day. Could be higher, could be lower.
I understand. My only point in bringing this up is going back into the debate as to whether or not we should have been paying a hundred percent or ninety percent and such, is that it is inexact. But it will be less if there is not a merger. So in my, you know, from my perspective, so I think debating the ninety or a hundred percent is part of this whole, you know, these are estimates. And how we started in the beginning versus where we are in terms of student count and in terms of estimates of building costs are both, you know, variables.
Yes, yeah, it's, thanks, Sharon. They are estimates. And the estimate is that if Berkshire Hills goes it alone, it's not a hundred million, it's ninety million. So Jake did take into account that it would be something less if Berkshire Hills built that pay school by itself. Julie?
I'll be very brief. I just want to say, having spent a lot of time with the Finance Committee over the last several months, I am in awe of what Jake and Nadine did for this presentation tonight. I had no idea where it would be. I see Patrick clapping. I'm like, oh, my God, I think of everything we've looked at. And truly, it is just a humongous amount of work that happened here with Matt's support. If you want to be dazzled, go look at Matt's spreadsheets, and then you'd be grateful for looking at what Jake just presented to us. Or sure, but thank you very much for your time. I don't want to take any more time today.
Thank you, Julie. Really appreciate that. That's a wonderful comment to end with. I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Hearing no objection, we are adjourned at seven forty. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.